Thank you. At this time, we're going to ask you to stand for the invocation by Reverend Dr. Katrina Brown.
Good evening to you all. In the year 1900, African-American poet James Weldon Johnson wrote a poem to commemorate the birthday of President Abraham Lincoln, which was performed by a group of elementary school students. One hundred and twenty-five years later, this poem, which was later set to music, continues to serve as an important symbol in the ongoing struggle for justice, equality, and civil rights because it speaks to hope, progress, and the pursuit of a better future. As elected representatives, your constituents are looking to you to do the same things. We expect you to act with wisdom, drive progress, and elevate our community. We look to you with hope that your actions lead us forward in the pursuit of a better county, a better state, and indeed, a better nation. As we celebrate Black History Month with the Board of Supervisors being led for the first time by an African-American, Reverend Kevin Smith, I would like to share as my prayer the third stanza of that 1900 poem entitled "Lift Every Voice and Sing." Let us pray. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who has brought us thus far on the way, Thou who hast by Thy might led us into the light, keep us forever in the path we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places, our God, where we met Thee; lest our hearts, drunk with the wine of the world, we forget Thee. Shadowed beneath Thy hand, may we forever stand, true to our God, true to our native land. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Brown. At this time, we're going to ask Ms. Laura Diop if she'll come up and lead us into our Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know. She read it.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic forwards and stands, one nation, under dog, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. She's all dressed up too, her fancy shoes. Okay. At this time, we'll have approval of our minutes for November the nineteenth.
Seven.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll have the adoption of the agenda.
Seven, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The approval of the considered agenda.
Seven, second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Bring us down the matters presented by the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So I just like to bring up, I'm getting a lot of feedback and pushback from my constituents wanting to continue to allow them to send letters to the board and have them read out loud. I'm just letting you know, at least in ten or twelve people who spoke to me said they want that to happen. So we haven't decided yet, but you know, I'm feeling I'm leaning that way to continue that so that people can, you know, voice their concerns publicly who can't make it to these meetings and so that everyone would know and know what their concerns are.
Thank you, Mr. Bizzotti. Anyone else? Is it managed? Yes, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to make my board aware. The Middle Peninsula Planning District, I'm sure Ms. Steele has seen the letter that has now been named an Economic Development District, which will mean there should be some more funds that will become available to our region with that designation. That designation has taken the Planning District Commission ten years to approve, and we got that notification at the end, well, we got it in January after our meetings, but it was approved in December. So that'll be good. More to come. That'll actually help the Middle Peninsula Alliance as well as we get that reformulated. So some good things are happening.
Good. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move on to our county administrative items.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just have two items. First, I wanted to mention that I am working with Community Engagement Office on doing another State of the County. Just kind of getting through the retreat and the CIP, so hopefully it will be out next week. Planning on wrapping things up on that. And that'll be highlights of different things and awards, et cetera, that the county that occurred last year, as well as some of the highlights for coming up. And then legislatively, I was contacted by a couple of from Fairfield that I know you all, most of you know, or all of you know, that there is a budget amendment that Senator McDougall has put in and that Delegate Hodges is also supportive on the House side that would provide a million and a half dollars for a new Middle Peninsula Historic Trail. And it would feature like the state park and other facilities and put together a trail that would promote tourism, and it would include facilities to improve so that when people go to visit these sites, they have more that they can do and all. So I wanted to let the board know about that and ask if you would like us to send a letter or an email to our legislators saying that the board supports that budget amendment.
Question. So where would we put this trail?
It's a regional trail that is highlighting, so it's like a drive yourself. It's not a physical path like the Beaver Dam Park Trail. It's like a driving trail that you would go between different historic sites that would have different activities for people to do when they visit them.
Okay. Mr. President of the Board.
Okay. All right. Be glad to do that. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Steele. Scheduled presentations. Artificial intelligence presentation, Ms. Steele.
Yes, we have a varied presentation for you tonight, so I'm going to ask that if you can to withhold your questions because you're going to hear from a number of different staff people, and I think it might break the flow up if one gets countered and somebody else may feel like they're not going to get their time or anything. So we are going to address the ways that the county is using artificial intelligence and also answer questions that board members raised and then collectively answer other questions that you might have based on the presentation. So I think Britten, you start. And if I can ask each employee to just introduce themselves and their title because I don't think we've had Britten before us before.
You have not. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody. My name's Britten Hogg. I'm a software analyst with the county, and I was asked this evening to present these first few slides about artificial intelligence in general and how the county is leveraging some of these tools or beginning to explore them. So I'm sure as most all of us are aware by now, AI is already here whether we want it or not. It's already found its way into a multitude of applications and software programs and a growing list of core operating systems. Apple Intelligence has found its way into iOS and macOS. Copilot is becoming a big part of Windows and Microsoft Tools. Adobe and Canva, which are two of the largest graphic design platforms in the world, both have AI services now deployed, and I'm sure we've all probably experienced now, Google Search has augmented search results with AI supplemented analysis and summaries. So we've got plenty of services out there that are already using these tools. Many were already using them in the first place. The financial industry was a big user of AI and some of its foundational technologies for a long time, providing services like fraud detection, e-commerce, and streaming services. Notably used some of these tools to provide purchase suggestions and streaming recommendations, ad targeting, and text prediction, which I'm sure most people are pretty familiar with now with mobile devices, was a big part of operating systems long before these AI chatbots became really mainstream. Next slide. So what are we using at the county? ChatGPT, which most people have probably heard of at this point, is probably the most profound. Given its ability to reason and actually act as an agent in some cases now, it has been able to assist people here in ways that I don't think people expected. OpenAI, which is the maker of ChatGPT, has actually rolled out some additional tools now just in the past few weeks. One is called Operator. Operator actually allows ChatGPT to look at a webpage, type, click, scroll, fill out web forms, order groceries, do a lot of things that are repetitive in terms of browser activities that humans would typically have to do. And within just the past few days, they released another product called Deep Research, which allows the model to actually comb the web, find, analyze, and synthesize hundreds of online sources, PDFs, images, articles, and return comprehensive research documentation to the tune of something that would be akin to like a research analyst. Now, this is really right now geared more towards professionals working in fields like finance, science, policy, engineering, but they're also presenting this as a very useful tool for even a very discerning shopper who may want hyper-personalized recommendations for things that might require heavy intensive research before purchasing, like appliances, furniture, or even a car. So research that used to take anywhere from, you know, several hours to a couple of days can now be done in about five to thirty minutes. Copilot is another service that we're looking at. It's not currently available for government clients, but eventually it will be built directly into Microsoft's Office programs and most of their online services, allowing users to have their data analyzed and transformed real-time, inline, without actually leaving these programs. Adobe Services, these programs are already live in terms of their service availability for AI augmentation, so graphic designers can actually have images generated and existing images and designs edited with just simple natural language requests. And then Google Search, we sort of mentioned earlier. Gemini is Google's product that's built directly into Android now and is also a major part of these common search results that most people are used to doing already. And then we have Placer, which some other folks are going to talk about. Next slide. So these technologies and their impact, the speed of adoption, means that we have to look at them with a very serious and thoughtful lens. Most, so this means taking a responsible use approach to how we allow users here to access these technologies. So first, end-users have to provide a justification for access. As we begin to explore these applications, we want to ensure that their use is providing legitimate impact on the organization and that the use cases that we're observing are varied. Users are, users with access are asked to go through an onboarding and training process. We want to ensure that users understand how to not only effectively use these tools, but to also use them safe and productively. And we meet regularly with our users that currently have access. So once a month, we have a meeting and we get together and talk about developments and news in AI. We talk about our existing use cases. We talk about challenges that we've had with using the programs or outcomes that we got that were unexpected or particularly positive, and we talk about new use cases that we may be able to apply these technologies going forward. And then we're also working on finalizing a policy that users will be required to abide by if they have access to these tools. Next slide. So we're also working to maintain a high level of caution when it comes to these technologies. As with any new technology and even existing technologies, they are not without their faults. A big one that we have put a lot of effort behind is ensuring that PII or Personally Identifiable Information is not processed by these tools by our users. So we do have a lot of information here in the organization that is public. Information that pertains to individuals, taxpayers, and citizens, we treat with extreme caution. And our users, if they have a use case that involves structured or unstructured data that contains personal information, they're advised to use placeholder information or fake information so that you can get outputs that might allow you to still get to the result that you're looking for, but without feeding this information to these models. Outputs may contain bias, so these models have all been trained on human knowledge, which inherently contains or can contain some form of bias, and so the outputs that you get from these tools can ultimately suffer from the same. Outputs can be inaccurate. These models are known to hallucinate at times, and they can even produce outcomes that are incorrect and non-factual, but appear very factual. So this leads to the next point up here, which is that users have to really have full command of their subject matter. That may sound different from what we hear on the news a lot, but these tools are not replacements for people just yet. So you really do have to have someone in the seat with access to these technologies that fully understands what it is that they're doing so they can maintain some level of awareness in terms of the accuracy of the outputs. And then we have some discussion about automation. So this is sort of the next phase of what a lot of these models are leaning towards. I touched on it briefly when I spoke about ChatGPT. Automation and agents are the next phase in this whole development of technology. The concern there is that when you have long strings of automatic processing and actions, that can get out of hand really quickly. I'm sure a lot of people remember in 2010, there was a flash crash in the stock market. There's been several cents that someone was particularly bad. About a trillion dollars disappeared and then came back over the course of thirty minutes due to a global cascade of algorithms and automatic trading processes that were all triggered simultaneously. So imagine that, but with lights, grocery orders, anything. So we have to really audit these systems and maintain awareness of what's happening. And then one that's not on this sheet, but that is very relevant now and that bears mentioning, is the introduction of systems like DeepSeek. So DeepSeek made news here recently and really shook the industry because it's been portrayed as something that is both low cost and highly accurate, whether that's true or not. It is now the most downloaded app on both the iOS App Store and the Android App Store, and that is extremely concerning. Because the level of surveillance and data collection that occurs through this app is one of the reasons why TikTok was banned. There's a lot of data being collected, and it's going back to China. So what kind of data is being collected through this app? Personal information as part of the signup, local storage and memory usage trends on your device, device models, ID, serial numbers, huge amounts of network information, IP addresses, MAC addresses, access point names, information about other openly connected devices on networks, keystroke rhythms and patterns, precise locations with GPS pings every thirty seconds, and data from cookies and other trackers that can reveal on-device usage, website visits, and even other app installs. This isn't the first app to be used this way, and it won't be the last, but the level of data collection is very concerning, and you do not want this data going to China. So people need to be extremely cautious about what systems they're even installing on their devices, let alone what kind of information they're giving to these systems in the form of queries. So that concludes my few slides.
Good evening. Eric Beach, Chief Information Officer. So with that ending, I think a lot of us think, well, why are we even going to get into AI? Should we even use it? And really, AI is a tool that is going to continue to be here, and we need to be able to use it. And we need to be able to use it in a safe manner for our local government, our organization, and our constituents. So with that being said, a company, or not, sorry, a government agency in California, San Jose in particular, formed the Government AI Coalition. Britten and I went there late last year, and it's a group of local, state, and federal partners that come together to promote responsible AI in government. We've been members for over a year with that organization, and we regularly participate in group meetings with them, which there's at least three or four every day that we can choose from. And this group, I've been to a lot of conferences over my lifespan. This one was particularly different because everybody's concerned about this, and it's a genuine coming together to try to figure out how we safely use AI because it is an incredible tool in being able to analyze data, aggregate data, and get answers quickly. I'm sure you've seen the example where Maria now can put notes together fairly quickly, Trish can put notes together from the board meetings fairly quickly, and summarize events of the board meeting or other items that occur. At the time of this writing, we actually had a policy under review with our county attorney. That's actually been approved now, and we have it in place. Trish is finishing up the typing of that. And yeah. We have one more slide. And we're going to talk about Placer for a few minutes. I think Placer came to the forefront a few months ago with regard to data and how it was used here in the county. Placer is a data aggregator. It takes public or data that's available for purchase from phone companies and other sources that gather data. Every time you sign an end-user agreement for Google iPhones, Android phones, you basically allow them to share your data to a point, and that point is called an EIN number on your phone, for example, that can be tracked through and around different antennas, and they can actually see where that phone travels, how long it stays in different places. How does Google Maps work? Well, it works because you've signed up for Google Maps, you're in a traffic jam, and it sees that your phone is going three miles an hour, and it puts the highway red. So Placer takes that data that's available to them and aggregates it for government use and other purchases of their plan to run information on traffic, on how many people were at an event, how many people collect around the Walmart at four o'clock in the afternoon or five o'clock in the afternoon. That's how that tool is used. It's very helpful for us in managing traffic patterns, seeing how traffic patterns are flowing. It also allows us to see, say, particular, how many people came to the festivals that we have, how long they stayed, where they stayed in certain areas, and helps us to better make decisions on the next year's events. Doesn't directly collect user data, but it receives it from mobile applications like I discussed just a minute ago. Differential privacy service removes individuals' identifiers before aggregation. Again, it's basically an EIN number from your phone. That number is used to track across different antennas as you travel and move around. Another thing that I didn't list on here, but also, many cars now are constantly transmitting their data, and you don't even know it. They want to know how fast the wheels are rolling, how fast they bounce, if there's a pothole in a certain road. Certain cities are already using that technology to say, hey, we've got a pothole because traffic's slowing down, and we see wheels are moving up and down more than they should in that particular area. So this isn't just a phone user issue. The car you're driving is probably telling many antennas where it is. Next slide. Part of the concern for Placer is the data. When they purchase that data, it's stripped of all personal identifiers. It also commands that only, sorry, that at least fifty devices must be aggregated in an area and around a data point to actually start tracking that data point. It's not, doesn't take one or two people and follow them. It has to have at least fifty devices. Providers are prohibited from sharing data of any known minors with Placer. Does not collect or sell the user data and does not knowingly sell or provide any data relating to sensitive locations such as military facilities, pre-K to twelve schools, facilities for minors, places of worship, rehabilitation centers, women's health facilities, and other locations limited by a particular law or regulation. This last point came out probably two or three years ago. Not necessarily a Placer issue, but with these type of companies with this kind of data, they saw a need to protect these pre-K twelve places of worship, women's health facilities, and others, and limited that site. So they do not share the school data, how many people were at that school, how they traveled into that school, to a certain point. And again, like women's health facilities too, they don't see a bunch of women and see that everybody's congregated there and put their safety in jeopardy. Next slide. That's my presentation.
All right. I'm Matt Barber. I'm the Director of Parks, Rec, and Tourism, and I think Eric and Britten kind of gave an overview of what AI is, and then for me, and I think everybody else that goes after me is going to kind of give you specific examples of what we're actually doing with this program for Placer. One of the main things, the first thing that comes to a lot of people's mind with parks is, you know, how do we count our park visitors that come? Previously, we would have car counters lined up, you see them along the streets, you know, traffic counters, and those are effective to some degree, but they're not, they don't really give us accurate information. Some of the issues we'd have with those is, for example, at Ark Park, you know, residents that live on Number Nine Road would travel up and down our road there and go over the traffic counter, but, so they got included in all of our park visitors, but they're never actually visiting the park. So this also happens down at Gloucester Point Beach with VIMS going back and forth and just people kind of going, hanging out, turning around. We weren't really getting, we didn't feel like very accurate data on what our actual visitors were, and this allows us to get much more specific information. Also, we had where all the batteries would always run out in those park counters, and we would go to check them each month and say, oh, we got no data for this last month. So again, this is just giving us a lot more effective way to manage our park visitors. We also get all sorts of information about, you know, when somebody comes to the park. Well, how long are they actually staying? Where did they come from? What else do they go do when they're there? And we can, basically, we can get anything and everything up and down Gloucester as far as, or we couldn't track it before, every boat landing we have, any parks where we didn't have counters at before. So it gives us an inclusive, inclusive set of data that we can actually use for all of our various needs. When you're looking at events, for instance, Daffodil Festival is always the easiest event to explain, is where does it start? Where does it end? People are coming in from all directions. How do you really know how many people are attending the event? We've always said twenty to twenty-five thousand, but we didn't really know. And basically, what we can do with Placer is draw a circle, or really, it's not a circle. It's draw a diagram around what we consider the event site, and then we get the accurate counts for in that area. So that really is effective on all of our various events that we do. Example, we could get exactly twenty-one thousand nine hundred for Daffodil Festival and thirty-six hundred for the recent Christmas and holiday parade. All right. I don't know if you can read this very well, but this is really just an overview of what you see when you actually pull up our park there. It kind of gives you an idea of what we see from the back end. This is an example specifically of Woodville Park, and it shows, basically, we have it set to show one year of data there. And what you see is all sorts of different things there. You see visits, visitors, how long they were at the park, and you can easily aggregate this data depending on if you want to see from month to month, from year to year, and all that. And it allows us, if you see where it says visits and visitors, it kind of breaks it down by, that's, visits is the number, basically, the number of people that came to the park, but visitors are the unique visitors that came to the park. So for instance, somebody might come four, five, six times for soccer. So we can kind of break it down by who's coming unique or who's just coming repetitive over and over. And this gives us a lot of, a lot of good information for what we need to plan with. And you can see at the top there, that's actually how we draw the diagram around Woodville Park. So it's very specific to specific areas. All right. And it benefits us besides all the ways I just explained. In the past, at the Visitor Center Museum, we would have manual logbooks where people would fill out their name, where they came from, their zip code, email address, anything like that, and then we'd have to manually take that and input it into a spreadsheet to try to track visitors and things like that. This allows us to kind of go from there and basically know, hey, we've got this many visitors coming from this area of the state or the region or wherever in the country. And again, I mentioned the Daffodil Festival before, but in addition to just drawing the event area, we're able to actually get accurate data on the counts. And all of our events that we aren't necessarily part of, but being a tourism destination, we promote them. Wine, Fine Arts Festival, Wine Festival, all that up and down the county, we can get accurate data on that to see, you know, how much of a tourism draw that really is. And of course, it helps us with all of our grant writing. We get a lot, all this data, you know, basically, we take it and we can put it into all the various applications and stuff that we do, and we rely on grants for so much of what we do on a day-to-day basis, and this allows us to really be positioned a lot better for those grants. All right. And then my last slide here is basically really tourism-heavy, and it explains kind of, a lot of what we do in tourism is we either take out an ad in a magazine, or we take out a social media campaign, or a Google ad somewhere, and we might get the information back, we had this many readers that read the magazine, or we had this many clicks on the, on the ad from Google. or we had this many clicks on the ad from Google. But then we can actually now see, hey, we know we targeted the Richmond area with this ad. Is this actually, this ad been effective to us? Are we getting this many visitors to our event from Richmond or from Hampton Roads or from Northern Virginia or wherever our campaign may target? So it really allows us to kind of pull that information together and see where we're at with that. And also, of course, return on investments. All of our events and programming we do, we kind of get a lot more data on, you know, basically where it stands, obviously the money part of it, but we know what we actually did reaching the audiences we wanted it to reach. So it helps us a lot in that regard. And I think that's my last slide. All right, Sherry.
Good evening. I'm Sherry Spring, Director of Economic Development. There's a lot of great things that this Placer will do for economic development efforts. One of the top things, I think, is we can provide information to locally owned businesses like customer zip codes so that you can see what their trade area is. And a lot of the small businesses obviously can't afford this information, so we can provide it as another tool to help them grow and expand. The other one, we can provide demographic information on available buildings to prospective companies. I'll show you more about that in a few minutes. We can obtain information on companies in a void analysis. So we can take a good look at what is it that we need? What is it that we want that we don't have? A couple of things that we came up with is we don't have men and women's clothing stores. We don't have a nice furniture store. So those are a couple of things that we could try to target and bring into Gloucester. And then it's going to help us overall market our available buildings and our shopping centers. And I'll allude to more information on that in a minute. Next, I don't think I can click and talk. Okay, so this is pretty cool. And then the dates on all of these next slides that I'm going to give you was arranged between December of '23 and November of '24. And you can see, I just took like the top six in Fox Mill Center. Walmart had 2.4 million visits. Now, I know a lot of us frequent Walmart a couple of times a week or whatever, so we're being counted every time we go in there if we've got a cell phone on us. Chick-fil-A, 1.1 million. Home Depot, 448,000. Murphy, 375. TJ Maxx, 373. And Aldi, 351. So if you're trying to market more chains to Fox Mill Center, this is the information that you want to share with prospective businesses. Next. And this is kind of interesting. Visitor Journey, it tells you, in the center is Fox Mill Center. So you see that 4.5% of the shoppers going into Fox Mill Center just came from the shops at Gloucester. And 1.6 went to Fox Mill Center after being at Riverside Hospital. Same thing going out. The top number was 3.2 of people leaving Fox Mill Center are going to the shops at Gloucester and 2.1 are going to Foodline. So it's just kind of interesting that that's the traffic pattern there. Okay. This is interesting. It's a trade area, which I just mentioned a few minutes ago, with zip codes. For the Fox Mill Center, you've got a trade area from Kilmarnick all the way down to Newport News. And if you ask Mr. Kabiki, who owns Fox Mill Center, he'll tell you that's a population of about 90,000. So that's good data to have as well. Next. Okay, then we're going down to the point shops for a few minutes. I mentioned data a few minutes ago. And you can see for the point shops, the median household income is 78.5,000. 39.4 have a bachelor's degree. 38.6 have a median age. They're mostly white and the persons per household is 2.53. I'd like to know how they figured that one. But this is the type of demographics that a lot of your bigger chains like Target has their demographics that says the percentage of bachelor degrees or above, the percentage of median, the amount of median household income. So this is good information to have again when we're trying to recruit new businesses. Okay, and I think this is the last one. The age of the visitors, the age, the largest age groups that go to the point shops are between 25 and 34 and 65 and above. So it tells you who your, who your audience are, who your customers are that's frequented basically the Fox Mill Center and the point shops. I picked those two since it was at Gloucester Point and the Courthouse area. I think that's it. Oh, Anne.
Good evening. I'm Andy Soties, the Director of Planning, Zoning and Environmental. We're hoping, we're still exploring the use of Placer AI for both transportation planning and comprehensive planning. We saw today with all the other departments, we're, I'm sure that we can use all that information as part of our comprehensive plan. And then transportation planning, we're hoping to be able to use more recent data. As you know, the VDOT, they collect their data, you know, every year, but they're often behind a couple of years in terms of the traffic counts and those kinds of things. So we're hoping to be able to use this for more up-to-date data. Cal Rizzio has been playing with the program and putting in traffic pins and trying to evaluate the difference between their data and the data that we're getting from VDOT. We also get data from our Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization and they also use cellphone data that they get from vehicles. So again, we're still exploring it, but we're hoping to, especially for our comprehensive plan, to be able to use some of this data to show the citizens, get citizens' reaction and then kind of help us figure out where we want to go.
Before we're asking questions, we just cross these out to remind you, this was a topic that we were looking to do after retreat and it didn't score high, you know, on y'all's preferences. So I had told us that, well, we'll do it in-
In May, after the budget, but there was more interest, so we went ahead. Thank you for, Joe, for having my mic on. So there was more interest and we were glad to bring it forward. Specific to Placer, the program was introduced to me first through International City and County Managers Association webinar. And so I was on with a number of other people. And we did a number of different research steps with them and found out they have like a 99 or something percent renewal rate. There's a number of them in Virginia that other localities. And so that piqued our interest to learn more. And I just would, you know, from a personal experience with AI, ChatGPT, I was able to use that for gathering information on all the technology overlay districts in the state of Virginia. And it just boom, boom, boom. The mistakes that Britten mentioned is pretty funny. I was working on a grant application and I said, please give me the list of all the counties in the state of Virginia with a population between 30 and 50,000. Well, it didn't include Gloucester. What, you know, print it out in two seconds. And I, so I just spoke to it, typed to it, just like you would kind of be human. And I said, why isn't Gloucester on the list? And it apologized to me and said, I'm so sorry, I missed that. He said, yes, you're correct, you're Glouce- I said, well, did you miss any more? Because I knew there were more. And then it printed the rest of them. So it's far from perfect, but yet I was able to grab that kind of data and then put it into this grant application. So there's a lot to it and I want to thank all the staff that helped present. And there's, we could spend all day on AI. Every conference that every one of us goes to, from finance to IT to ICMA, has tons of things on AI. And I hope that you see that we are being very cautious and we are not allowing people to use different programs, again, without being trained and being, you know, being a part of that system. So any of us are available to answer any questions that we can. And if we can't get the answer, we'll get it off AI. Just kidding.
Okay, I know I'm going to be one of many. So the first thing is you have to have a phone, right? This doesn't work without a phone, correct?
Either phone or a car. That's Placer. But remember ChatGPT and the Excel programs-
So the phones are absolutely the reason why all these things are developing, correct? Because the phone has the AI and you can follow, correct?
No.
No? So-
I can address that. So AI is artificial intelligence that comes about from what we call large data, large language models. And that's just information gathered throughout the internet and other resources. Placer is, exists because there's aggregated data from phone usage that tracks around. So Google Maps, Placer, those type of applications, you use those phones. But artificial intelligence, it's just not based on telephones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just got four quick points. I know at CNU, we don't allow our students to use ChatGPT at all. It's an honor code violation if they do. A bunch of us professors about a couple of weeks ago sat around conference room and we asked ChatGPT to defend the hypothesis that the earth is flat. And it did. That the earth is flat and it did. One of the things that you've probably seen in the news, that's heavily in the news now is the number of illegal immigrants that came into our country. I looked up Homeland Security website and they indicate that 24,000 single Chinese males came into this country. We don't know who they are and what they're doing. So that should be a large concern for all of us here in this country. I heard the gentleman from Parks say that they want to follow people where they go. That kind of bothers me a little bit. It's a privacy issue. And so we have to be careful, like you say, what we do with this artificial intelligence and how it works and how it can affect our lives and how it can affect everyone's lives.
Well, on the point of privacy, there is no guarantee of privacy when you sign the end user agreement. We're not, we don't know that Mr. Bazani went to the park at 9:00 AM and stayed for an hour. We know that a certain number of people gathered at the park for that time. You could say it is an invasion of privacy. However, we used to have a person down there counting how many times people went through the clicker. We've had people sit at a corner and count how many cars come into an area. So it's a different tool to get to the same result and quicker.
If I could just real quick, the comment about the earth being flat. And Britten says this better than I do in the training that we've been through with him. But basically, anything that's on the internet is what's available. So it's not, doesn't have an outside source of, oh, we're going to go over here to the Flat Earth Society. It's anything on the internet. So if you wanted to Google on the internet and find that, you could. The difference is it finds it faster. And it might take different sources and put it together and give you sort of a position paper. So there's a lot of things that can be done that are potentially inappropriate or unethical. I think we have to face all the scary parts head-on, but we are able to do our jobs better and more efficiently and will continue to be as we modernize. When I first started with the county, there was no computer. I had to teach myself and had a volunteer come in and help me use a computer. I couldn't imagine operating without a computer now. So, and computers are dangerous. I know when I had young ones, right? You don't want them getting on the wrong places. So all of it has pros and cons. What we're trying to say to you is, and we want to answer any concerns you have and either the public has, we are being responsible government employees and trying to not eliminate jobs, provide better services again to the public. Because many of the places like Hampton and others are working on the out-facing AI to help their constituents when they want to find an answer to, is a convenience center open today, that kind of thing. So it's helping for the citizens, it's helping for us. And that's why, and it's becoming part of, it is doing business today.
Yeah, if I can add to it, as these applications and every single one that Britten listed and others, they all have AI embedded. So when we realized that, we took a proactive stance, connected with GovAI, went out to that conference, learned an abundance of information, made a lot of contacts on how to manage AI, wrote the policy as quickly as we could to be as, to cover as much as we can and protect ourselves. And genuinely feel like we're using AI safely in this, that we can.
Dr. Olden, what about the accuracy of some of these numbers? So when you have a number that we saw people going to Walmart, 2.4 million, how accurate is that number? Do, is there, is there, like, if I go out and do a count, you know, I do a count and I know how many are there, but these are all being generated. So does that, someone-
You would have to really take into account how the accuracy, what, how the algorithm is written.
Right.
Is it, does it say I'm only counting an EIN number one time every 12 hours, every 24 hours? You would have to do some research into how that's calculated.
But has anyone done that? I mean, we get these numbers, but the development of these algorithms, do people test those to make sure that there's accuracy associated with it? Or do we know that?
I don't-
I can say that we did ask questions about that with Placer early on and they have agreements with major department stores. So another thing that they do that we're not getting into and you have to pay extra for is looking more at the economic, the amount of money and different things that are coming through those stores. And they go back and compare them. They're doing it through their algorithm and then they check it with the company and they have been spot on. There is sort of a level of professional trust that we will never be able to prove them right or wrong. We know that these are people who do this kind of work and they, I think they have an interest in being accurate and not being disproven because if they're disproven somehow or doubted more, then they're not going to sell their product. So they have a whole lot of people working on this, that kind of thing. And then the other is that if there's a consistency. Okay, sorry.
So my concern is this. We had a couple of lists here, ChatGPT, Gemini, all these other Google search things. I, as a user and consumer, can choose to use those or not use those. Placer AI, I don't have that option. I either have to turn my phone off and not be counted or I don't have an option to not use Placer as a citizen and a end user. And is our AI policy in place?
It is.
And in the slide here, it says we are finalizing it. So I was just making sure that it was final and in place.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, the board probably needs to see a copy of that. How long have we been using Placer?
We bought it in the spring. And I did, as I mentioned before, I did talk about it and had sent some emails out and I had highlighted it. We were supposed to have a, you know, retreat in December, so I knew in the fall and I put it on the list because I wanted the board to know about it. Not just Placer. And as far as, you know, the user end, whether we use Placer or not, Placer is getting our data. Google Maps is getting our data. So we're-
Yeah, we did not give Placer our data. Placer has bought that from different companies who already-
Totally understand that.
So it's a question of, is it worth it to us to get that data and use it from a county perspective?
Well, the board didn't have the option to answer that. It was told to us that we are using it and this is what we're going to use it for. So what was the cost again of Placer?
Twenty-one, twenty, about 20,000. And as we talked about it internally, we said this is, it is a subscription. So it's, this is our test year. We don't know, we just talked about it the other day. We have to decide whether we want to continue to use it or not.
And does it stay 23,000 or does it go up?
We have not gotten a quote because it's not, our year is not up. But I would expect it's in the same and maybe some small inflationary.
Okay, so what does the, what is the cost of the government AI membership?
Government-
$25?
Yeah, it's minimal, $25.
And what was the cost of the trip to California?
$2,400.
So now we're up to $27,000 for the cost of Placer AI because we only went there because we're using Placer AI.
No, sir.
That is not true.
No, sir.
Absolutely not.
I guess we need to know too, what partners are providing the data to Placer AI. Because one of the slides says, and that's, this is the problem with waiting to the end because now I have to go back through my slides because I don't have a hard copy here that I write on. But it says in here somewhere that they provide, partners provide the data for Placer AI. So we as a board probably need to know who those partners are because then I can go into my phone and turn off the tracking.
No, you will not. You've signed your end user agreement.
No, no, sir. I can, I can turn this off. I can turn my phone off right now, Eric, and it's over with.
No, you cannot.
Oh, yeah, I can.
Oh, you can turn it off, but it will keep tracking you.
That's why I want-
Not until you take that battery out will it stop.
Well, that's okay, but that's, we need to know, Placer needs to tell us what partners are providing the data.
We will provide you a copy of the contract which lists that and if, and other information, if there's anything else beyond that.
Because there's, there's whole other things here that I have that probably aren't really relevant to the conversation. I don't see the benefit because there are ways that we can get these numbers currently without spending $23,000 annually or more to ascertain this information. You know, we had the issue with the counters at the locations, you know, County Arc Road. Well, let's change where the, the counter is so it doesn't capture the cars that don't turn into the park. I don't know. And then the other thing that I have an issue with was providers are prohibited from sharing data of known minors. Okay, so now I have to let someone else know that I have purchased a cell phone for my child who is not a, an adult. Because Verizon, T-Mobile, none of them know if you have three lines on your phone, if they're all for adults or for kids. And then you have here insuring anonymity. They do not knowingly sell or provide any data relating to sensitive locations. That's kind of open and vague. I have a problem with that. Because, well, we didn't know we did, but unfortunately, we sold all the information to everybody. We sold all the information for everybody that went to the Naval Weapons Station. We sold it all to, all the information for every kid's parents that went to the basketball game at Achilles Elementary School last week. It's knowingly. It's, they're not for certain what they're doing. And these numbers, while, you know, they're, they're getting corroborated, they still all sound like a wag to me. And this is not something that I think is going to give us a benefit that's something that's going to use up. And then, you know, I'd like to know where they get their demographic info. The one page here, because I have to go back through the slides here, when we're looking at the Point Shops audience. In my end user agreement for my EIN, EIN of my cell phone, I've never told them my age, whether I graduated from high school, college, what color I am, and how many people live in my household. That's all not part of my EIN. And that information is, I, this, this is causing me a lot of heartburn.
Well, let me just address that for a second. When you fill out forms on Google and on your phone, you do tell you, tell them it's a male. Do you tell, tell your age group generally what your salary is in a general range?
You have a different Google account than I do.
Okay.
I think this really is back to a trust issue. And AI is a difficult trust issue. All of us are worried about, you know, whether, what the future is going to hold and people who are, there are some people who are very afraid of losing their jobs. There's other people who are afraid of being stalked. But I think, you know, if the board, I made a decision and I stand by my decision and I feel it was very correct and we will, we would without the boards, if the board doesn't direct us differently, we will evaluate whether it's worth it or not from a business perspective of day-to-day actually understanding, you know, how we're using it. If the board says, we don't want you to use this program, we're absolutely going to respect that. But I think if the board says, we don't want you to use AI, then you're missing the, you can't even say the future. You're missing what's currently going on. So how we can help the public to be more trusting of the county in our use versus China or whoever else, and how we can have the board understand that when we're working day-to-day and we're doing research projects and we're using this information, that we find it effective without it being the harmful software that it, that obviously there's some concern. So where we go from here, I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, because we'll, we'll do whatever the board, we work for you all. So if the board wants us to end our contract with Placer, we'll end it tomorrow. If you want more information, as the county attorney reviewed the contract, and you want to look at that, you want more information, if you want, potentially, I don't know that we can get a representative from Placer here, but we might be able to do an online something or have something separately, a committee. You know, if you want to sign a, a new AI committee with a couple of board representatives to work more thoroughly on this, we'll, we'll go wherever you want.
With regard to Placer, what would be the cost benefit? I mean, we obviously are going to spend something for this program. Do we know that the benefits that come back to the county exceed what we spend for that particular program?
This is still, it's still in testing as far as for us, we have already, I feel we definitely are getting our money's worth and they're extremely helpful. We meet monthly with them. They provide a lot of technical assistance. If we were going to hire somebody to do a survey for, say, the Daffodil Festival, for example, we would pay multiple thousands of dollars to have the analysis done that we're getting from Placer. We wouldn't necessarily do that though, right? So it's not like, oh, we're going to sub in money we would have spent and we're going to spend it on Placer because we haven't had that kind of an ability to do. We had two surveys in the 38 years of the Daffodil Festival, two surveys of the attendees, and that's it.
It might be good if we are going to consider continuing that contract to have that information available to the board that we can make then a best estimate as to whether it's appropriate or not.
I, I said, we will do-
I mean, the examples like you had tonight would be worthwhile to have, you know, provide the board because when the contract is ready, I think it would be good for us to know exactly what we are, what benefits we do get. And if there's an economic component to it, that would be great.
And, and I think it would be helpful for me as an administrator, for you all and working with the staff, to have a as best as possible clear understanding of when does the board want to get into that level of granular. There were a lot of questions that were raised at the last meeting and we're going to talk a little bit more into the, with the CIP about our finance and everything else software. I'm not sure what the exact name for it is because it does so many different departments. I'm, in a case like that, I'm looking at the people who use the program day-to-day, who know it best. And I know my knowledge is limited, so I'm kind of looking at you all and thinking when you're coming, you know, to this position, you're looking out for all your constituencies, but unless you get into the trenches in that day-to-day, it's probably impossible for you to really understand the pros and cons and really the value. And I think it's more of, do you come with, I want to know more, I trust you guys, I think you're doing a great job, I trust you, want to know more? Or is it, do you come with an attitude of this is something that you shouldn't be spending money on without coming to us?
So continuing that line of thought, so we have people on this group that go to the chairs and vice chairs monthly or whenever. You know, Eric, you mentioned about this component out in California that has, it's like a user group. Are we hearing from our fellow members across the river regarding AI on some of the issues we've also brought up?
Many of the counties and cities that are in our area were at that conference.
Yes, and some of them are much further along than us, and we are much further along than some of the smaller localities.
Which counties are using them right now?
Placer? Or AI in general?
AI?
Placer.
I, they gave us the number that they had in customers that they had in Virginia, and I know we contacted, and I wish Christine was here because we contacted several people. And I don't know if, because she checked with the people who are using it and they said they loved it. So we specifically reached out to a couple of the localities in Virginia that use it and got feedback from them.
Roanoke County, Roanoke County and Richmond are two that I know definitely.
Anybody in tourism that, I'm sorry, too, I know, tourism users is very prominent.
Yeah, but one of the things that is coming up is there are apparently a lot of questions that are being asked of this AI and Placer. It might be worthwhile for the board to put together their questions and, you know, get answers from, you know, you guys who made the presentations.
And if I may say too, I just want to make sure that we delineate between AI and Placer, two very different products. Placer uses AI technology.
You're not going to get away from AI.
We're not going to get away from AI. There's no way to get away from AI. It's, it's just as like the Internet came, there's no escaping it. And that's why as Chief Information Officer, do I love AI? No, I am not in love with AI. I understand the good and the bad of it. Just like the Internet, just like all the information. It aggregates the information for you quicker. The information is still out there on the Internet. My job, and as explained by Britton, is to know the pluses and minuses and try to guard as well as we can against this tool when it's bad and use it for the good that we can.
May I ask Mr. Bazani a question? You mentioned that at your school, you would not allow students to use it at all. How do you control that?
It's hard to control. What we do, what I do in my class is I ask them at the beginning of every day, I'll ask them to write a paragraph about themselves. And I'll take that paragraph and compare that to some of their papers that they write and see if they, you know, because some, some a lot of students don't know how to write. They can't put anything logically together. And you can tell, you can tell when they've used an AI tool to write, you know, you can get, you can ask the AI tool, like ChatGPT, to write a 15-page paper on the assassination of Abraham Lincoln with, with citations and everything, and it will do it in about 30 seconds. And, you know, but if we catch them, it's an honor code violation.
No, I appreciate that because my daughter teaches at Georgia Tech in Europe and she has the same issue. And she said she can't-
All universities do.
She says she can catch the students based on when she reads essays, you know, the difference between something done by ChatPTI and what a student does. So you're right.
There are also certain tools that can recognize the rhythm of ChatGPT.
They literally will take that paper and run it through for you and find out if it's already been published on the Internet, and that's how a student got it. They use AI to catch AI.
Mr. Nakosia.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I have two questions, and I know the difference between AI and Pacer. Because we've been in a lot of discussions at the high school level about the programs and what's going on and what the kids are using. But here is my two questions. I've got two schools of thought, so give me a second. First things first, everything, every time you check your email, every time you turn on the TV, you're involved in something that there's a data breach. Okay, so you say, and I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just telling you what, how my mind is working. And now I've had conversations with my constituents about both, okay? They know what Pacer is, they know, they know what it's used for, and most of the ones that I've talked to know how it operates. But they say to me, they say, Mr. Supervisor, may I ask you a question? That all sounds well and good, but what if there's a data breach? And what if this data that they say that they don't, they don't have or they don't collect, they really do? And, and so I'm just bringing that to the forefront. I'm not, I'm not putting that on you. I'm just telling you that's a concern. A concern is that I understand that it tracks a number on my phone. I also understand that the only way that my phone cannot be tracked is if I take, physically take the battery out, if that's possible. But, but the concern of the people that I've talked to and the way our district is, what if there's a data breach? And you, and we, and this information that you say that they can't get is actually there, such as minor children. Okay, that is a big concern with my constituents. The second thing is I'm going away from Pacer and going AI. I understand there is a policy in place that the, the county attorney has left. What I want to know about that policy because I have not seen it, is there, is there checks and balances and Overwatch in that policy? Because that is a great tool, yes. But there is cause for great concern.
Can-
We'll be glad to get you the policy and there is Overwatch involved.
And, and I want to be clear too. Oh, I'm sorry.
So let me ask two questions. Hasn't, you know, we haven't had Placer AI since spring of, you said, spring of last year. Up until that time, we were an inefficient county in figuring out what data we need and don't need. Second question is if we are, if it's an efficient tool, what costs have been reduced? Have we reduced costs? Is it worth buying this software? If it's not, if it's not saved this county and the taxpayers any money? Despite the fact that it may provide some parts in the department, oh, that's nice to know that we've got so many people going to Walmart and so many people going to parks and so on. Is that, is that something that's reduced significant costs?
I think I would like-
To offset the cost of the software?
I would like to have more time to get back to the board on specific ROI information. As I just mentioned, tourism is a heavy user of these geo-tracking type devices or, or programs. And we have not had the money to spend on some of these things. And so we are doing new services that we've never done before. So I cannot say off the top of my head of any money saved. But as far as efficiency, as Mr. Barber was talking about, if you're going to buy an ad and you want to know if it's effective, that is literally one of the things that's required on every VTC grant application, is you have to show how, because they're all, these are marketing grants. And they want to know how you know whether the money that they spent is effective. Well, now we have a means of doing that. We can say we bought an ad in such-and-such paper, we targeted through Facebook or whatever, and these, this is the response we have. So I would, I would like more time to get back with you all on more details. And I, and I also just want to mention to Mr. Bazani, Mr. Nakosia's a question about what if there is a breakage? If we are not using Placer, if we're not a customer, that could happen. All of our information is there, whether we're buying summaries or not. So, and, and I don't know that everybody really is familiar with Placer unless they're a whole lot further along because I had never heard of this program before ICMA. And so I don't know, and, and when we brought it up to the staff and we had a demonstration of it, I don't think anybody there had ever heard of Placer. So it's not a household. It is a name software. It's not something that people individually use. It is used by corporations and governments that are looking at economic development and other kinds of things to help.
So, so before you, you know, we went into Placer and you did these grants with advertising, did you not have the data to support the grants and they would question, question that?
Not well. No, not well.
Were we ever questioned or denied a grant because we didn't have adequate information?
I don't know, but as far as the, I don't think we've ever, no, I don't know if we were denied for that if our grant application wasn't good enough. I'm not sure that, I, I'm not aware of ever being told your ROI wasn't good enough. I know that we have done things in the past, like we created the 1-800 number, it's an 888 number, so we could track. Other places paid to have individual numbers on different ads that you would call, things like that, that we, again, did not have the money to do. I, I feel like right now that we're, that we're at a congressional hearing kind of feeling. That's the way, I mean, just being really quite honest and I'm, you know, for the audience and for the public, that I feel like we're being questioned like somebody who's trying to get an appointment or something. I don't think that's a good feel for us as staff. And I think, again, if the board is so opposed to something, then go ahead and say it and we'll stop using it. If the board wants to have more information, then please keep giving us this feedback, but let's do it in a way that is not, have you done this or have you done that, that is accusatory. We're, we're trying to do the best we can.
Mr. Nakosia.
The point you just made though about the going after a grant and targeting, ad targeting a specific location. So if we do that, is Placer going to tell us if that person saw that ad or not? So we'll know that they came here because of that ad? I mean, that's- So that's, that's, that's another thing that I'm just, this is not to be accusatory or anything else, but when this gets out and we receive information and we get the anonymous letter, you know, and I, and I know we pushed this off a meeting ago, but these are things that we probably should have known last spring versus February of this year. Because of the amount of information that they're gleaning and that we are now purchasing to use for different things that we're outlined tonight. I'm sorry, it's uncomfortable, but when I get- I'm sorry, it's uncomfortable, but when I get questioned in the street, then I'm uncomfortable. So like everything else, it goes downhill. So what we're doing tonight is trying to figure out how this came about, why we're using it, and what we're using it for. And if that's a problem, then maybe we shouldn't be using it, because this is not what this is for.
Mr. Hudson.
To answer that question, we were told about it last spring. When they, they first started using, yes, we were, it was in the weekly newsletter.
Yes, a one-stunit blurb that we are using Placer AI. That was it, nothing more.
My question is, and it was brought up a couple of times, my biggest concern about the whole thing is simply how it's tracking children. Because if somebody has a family self-policy or whatever it is, it doesn't say whose phone is whose. That's my biggest concern. But as far as Placer's concerned, if we don't utilize the data that's collected from it, it's still going to be collected in the county, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
One thing, we were going to have this retreat in December, right? And we had to postpone it. Was this going to be on the?
No, you all didn't choose it as a top topic. I, I probably should have pushed that more. But we let you all choose, and we have a lot to cover. So, you know, I mean, we said we would hit all these different things that we didn't get to at work sessions or some other board meeting.
Yeah, your comment about congressional hearing, I think a lot of these questions that we have are because now that we've heard from staff and how this is operational, you know, we are now, you know, addressing these concerns and questions in a way that help us understand how the data, how these programs are being used. And I think it's, it's important for the public to hear us asking you questions, because they don't have an opportunity other than these meetings to see what goes on. So I'm not saying, I apologize for the types of questions, but these are the questions that, you know, we have that are important for the citizens to hear, the fact that we are asking questions, we're not sitting back and just listening and not reacting.
I appreciate that, and I don't want anybody to think I'm being hypersensitive either. When I have staff, when I get a citizen call about a complaint of an employee or a concern, I'm trying to give that employee the benefit of the doubt until I have additional information. And so it's a hard call, what y'all are doing right now, because you're representing your constituency and even somebody who was so upset about it that they wrote an anonymous letter to the board. I, I think that person is probably on, you know, a lower knowledge base about this, but on the other hand, they may say they're the greatest knowledge about it, and I'm the one who's ignorant. I don't know. But we can't even talk to the person because they sent out an anonymous letter. And I know you've got other people, you've had rumbles in the audience tonight where AI is, is a tough subject. I think that where we really need to draw the line in on the questions is there's, again, sort of this unpleasantry towards Placer. I think we can do really good things and help our jobs, and I think we can be better at tourism marketing, we can be better at economic development because of it, but it's not going to stop us from doing our jobs. So if, the, the, where I would really draw the line is if the board was saying, we need to stop using AI. That's where I think, and I, you know, I know, like Mr. Crisco, you said, we can't stop doing that, and we agree on that. And so I think even for the board or for maybe audience members on TV or, I mean, at home or here, they may not understand, this is a big topic. And it's going to be very difficult to try to educate the public so that everybody would say, oh, I get it now, okay, that's great, y'all go ahead. I don't think that's ever going to happen. I think there's always going to be people who are going to be thinking, this isn't a good thing, even if all seven members said, we love Placer, this is the greatest thing, this is great. There would still be people who, there's no way to explain it.
Yeah, I don't think there are many people who, out there that are not concerned. I mean, it is something out there. And I knew you mentioned the new program that came out from China that was deep state or deep-
Yeah, it's crazy.
And it's what you just mentioned in terms of how it's gathering information based on keystroke is really pretty scary.
This is a very difficult topic to understand and come to terms with. And I think we're seeing the fruition of all of our data being out on the internet for everyone. And data breaches, and I'm not defending any one company, but there have been data breaches everywhere. And I think maybe to Mr. Crisco's point, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's not whether the data's being collected, whether we want to be part of the use of it. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think that, maybe that's a good way to bring it down.
I have not seen a cost benefit to the $23 or $23. If it was $23, I'd give you the $23. But the $23,000 outlay with the budget going to be as tight as it is, I think we need to know, because I think every dollar is going to count. We need to know by budget season whether or not we should continue to fund this, because every penny is going to matter.
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. First, I just wanted to thank each of the employees for their presentation tonight, all the hard work you put into it. I've learned a lot. AI is a very interesting issue, but, but as we've all talked about, it's, it's very new and kind of scary in, in some ways, but at the same time, I think people can also see the potential benefit, provided privacy is detected, protected. I, I think where I am is, we need to learn more. Like to look at the ROI on, on these type of programs, like to look at the policy that the county has, and, and learn more before we make a decision on, on this technology. Because if, if we can be confident that the data is protected and the data of children are protected, the data of our citizens are protected, then I could see, best case scenario, that we, it would be a very high ROI. Because tourism, when we can measure that and target those efforts, those people are coming into our county, spending their money and leaving, which is a, a good thing when we are struggling with our infrastructure and our ability to support the, our growing population. So if we have that economic impact. And then economic development, you know, just add a little humor to this, you know, you see on social media, there's this huge Texas Roadhouse contingent on social media. You know, you see that over and over. I'd love to have a Texas Roadhouse in Gloucester, but what Texas Roadhouse is going to say, well, what's the data? Who's here? Who goes to restaurants like our restaurant? Can we support a restaurant in Gloucester County? And so a technology like Placer, provided it's safe, provided the data's protected, could have a huge ROI for businesses like that looking at our county. So I, I have some concerns like everybody, but I want to learn more, and thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely. Can I add one statement to that? Texas Roadhouse and companies like that already use data like that to determine and help determine locations. So our citizen data again is going to be used.
Same thing with Costco, right? I always have to be, you always-
Are there any more questions from board members? Yes, sir.
I know that you're going to provide us with the information. One thing that would be helpful when talking to the citizens is, can we get, also get a little information on Pacer itself? Like I know we're going to get, you know, return on investment, we're going to look, maybe see the policy, but the actual company itself, I, it would be helpful, it would be useful to see a little bit of that information, just for knowledge base.
Would it be useful to have a page on the website to describe Placer? And is that some resources?
What about Beehive? Or a weekly column that Quentin could do that talks about AI? You know, Quentin's been really good at putting things out about the county, just to inform the citizens and obviously the newspapers and Facebook or whatever, just to let the citizens know what's going on.
So I, I want to get everything back that the board has asked for and hopefully even more. And I think that's a good idea too, because it, it makes me think it's not just providing information to you all, but sort of putting together a quick, maybe it's going to end up being a flyer that goes on to a social media thing that Quentin sends out. But something that is public-facing, that you all can use too or point to, because walking around with this information in your head is pretty hard to remember, and having a fact sheet for the public on how Gloucester County uses AI, I think would be helpful for you all. And then we'll give you more information on Placer as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Steel. Any more questions? No more questions? Thank you so much, staff, for coming and giving us your presentation. Mr. Beach, I did have one quick question though. I won't be long. I just, my only concern is the children tracking. And you said they don't track schools, churches, rehab centers, and women's, women's health, but you said to a certain point. How do you know what that certain point is?
I don't know exactly what that perimeter is, but I can find out for you.
Could you please? And the parks, most of your parks, you have children at your parks. I was, I just don't understand, I just want to distinguish between an adult and children. And every child now, they're getting younger and younger with cell phones.
One of the things that helps with that was in the presentation, is that it does not collect data unless there's 50 more people in that area. So a person's not going to do a search on Placer and see two, two dots in the woods regularly at 2:00 and think, oh, those are two children after school playing in the woods. That's not what happens. What happens is the data is collected and, and you have to have a certain amount of people in a group.
Okay. And my last question is, I, I can't see, I can tell if I'm black or white. If I go to a shop, I know what I am, Ted.
You're blue on the screen.
If I go to a shop, how does it know if I'm black or white? Do they write it on my money?
Again, there, there are questionnaires that we fill out at times.
It's using census data too, so.
It is using census data, but you use your phone to fill out forms about credit cards and different information, where you would list your race at times. Sometimes you don't have to list your race. But you can say, I make between X and Y, and, and that data is, is gathered and bought.
So you're going through a layoff right now, 150 employees.
Who is?
Placer AI. Guaranteed replacement. Placer AI?
Actually, one question, if I wanted to, so you said you need 50 people, but in the parks, you know, if you're trying to get information on people that use the parks, if it's just two or three people, then we're missing numbers, right?
You would be, you would be missing small minor numbers like that.
So they're using algorithms, and they are not counting every single person every single time. There is an algorithm, just like a lot of the other AI programs have different things built in. What I don't, and this was a question that sort of I got tonight, was with the 50 people threshold, we might have 50 come into a park all day, so they would allow that perimeter to show. And we need to find out about, when is it the, the time period for the 50s? So I know they've told us, like, if we want to look at helping a small business, if they don't have enough customers coming in there, they cannot do it. If we want to look at a zip code that doesn't have enough people attending an area, they won't give us that zip code at all. You've got to have that whole list. So we will find out a little bit more about how that 50 limit goes. For doing the, the schools and all that, they've told us there's a perimeter around any government facility ever, we can't do a, a search on that site. It just says, like, no data. So even, you know, county buildings.
With regard to economic development, maybe we can ask Ms. Spring to kind of canvass some of our businesses to see if they're interested in these types of data, or if they're actually using the data themselves, you know, that are provided by other sources, just to get a handle on what this means for economic development of the county, because we're all for bringing businesses to the county. So how do we know that this information is already being disseminated through these businesses? Or, again, how can we help businesses with that data?
We did ask because it was advertised, one locality was advertising that they would provide the data for you, it was on their website. I can't remember which one it was right now, but they were saying, we're here to help small businesses, we'll help you with this. And I asked, because I was afraid they were doing something that they weren't allowed to do, and I was like, can we do that? Because it's a nice service if you, for small businesses. And they said, absolutely, you can do that, you just can't, you know, like run their, you know, do something all the time for them and be sort of like, we're going to substitute you buying your subscription. But we are allowed as a government entity to help small businesses and run reports for them. And, and one last thing, just when you mentioned about the state place, because I think that was the example I, I gave the board, but we also have information everywhere else. So if we're going to be concerned about our citizens, we've got information when we go to count. So if we want to see how many people are eating and how much, what's going on across the river, that we might be able to sort of take that business back or bring it here, we can look at the numbers anywhere, not, we can compare ourselves to Halifax, to wherever.
Example of me might be that we know that Mr. Gavicki continues to explore, you know, bringing businesses, and we know that other businesses are coming. Is he using Placer for some of this? How does he decide?
He is, he's definitely using something. He may not be using that program, and then he may be using a company that uses that program that provides a service, like we're saying we could do for small business.
Thank you, Ms. Steel. Thank you, sir. I don't, but I want to say, I don't think the price is bad. I would just like to know how much it's going to cost, you know, yearly? What's the fee's going to be?
Well, just looking at their website, Pacer AI. Forty-two thousand people last month went to Walmart from Hays. Eight thousand went to Target, and 3,000 went to Sam's. So just going on their website, you can't drill down into it without a user ID and password. But this is just information they're giving off the top to people that live in specific zip codes.
Cell phone company problem.
Okay. Okay, next we'll move on. Public comment period. We asked that you keep your comments to what, three minutes? Three minutes or less? And it's not about the public hearing. You keep your public hearing comments until the public hearing, please. Mr. Mallory.
Come over here, Mr. Mallory. Oh, no, we're good right here. Yeah, just hit the right button on. There we go. Oh, my. That is, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ms. Steel, Mr. Wilmot, Howard Mallory, York District. AI has been another pin in the national police sting. The next four to six weeks will prove to be interesting as the new budget season is in full swing. The time has arrived where the administration requires the need to relieve your wallet of a sum of your net income. This is to be announced later. Those who ever worked for the government know the game spent all to get a larger chunk for the new fiscal year. Nothing has changed at all levels of government. Conservative fiscal spending is only for the ears who may think this is a true happening. This year, wages will be a major factor. The federal COLA was 2%. What would your COLA be for this fiscal year above that level? A special interest item was the employees of the water department buying bottled water to drink on our credit card from Walmart. I wonder why they do not drink the same water they manufacture. Ever notice when you go to the doctor's office, the water is commercial from another public city system? Even what is bought for individual family use, something to consider when our system passes all purity tests. Moving on, all DEI policies across the entire county systems need to be abolished. This will take, will this take place and when? Our public utility system, being an enterprise on otherwise paid for by the users, needs a multimillion-dollar overhaul covering more than one decade. When will the Board of Supervisors instruct the administration to proceed with analysis and determine the face, first phase of multimillion funding for upgrading? Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Does anyone else like to address the board? Mr. Mallory's other Tesla? That chair?
I'll be back.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Connor Walsh. I don't do public speaking, I'm terrible at it, so I'm going to try to do my best. So this is, I'm a show-and-tell kind of guy, because I'm a visual person. This is one of my filters from my house. I put in a system a year ago. These are supposed to be used 18 months. I'm changing these every two months. And the amount of crap that's coming in my water is at three parts per million. Ferrex iron coming into my house.
City water?
City water. So I have a three-year-old daughter, I'm trying to protect her, and so the other two members- so the other two members that owned the house before me both died of cancer. So I'm trying to prevent that. I spent $6,000 on my system, and I had to actually hire a plumber to prove to the city that the water was bad. So I had them do that, and then now it's in the city's hands. But obviously, they don't have the money to fix it, and we're obviously having issues with funding things in general. And I just think that we need to not kick the can anymore. It's time to do something about it. And like I said, I live out on the point, and this is what we're getting. And I'd just like an opportunity to talk to you guys about it and try to get it resolved. This is not just me. This is everybody that's on my circle. I live at 1643 Colony Circle. Everybody in my neighborhood is getting some sort of red discharge in their water. So I just wanted to tell you guys and tell you guys what's going on, because they're not getting the funding that they need and they desperately need it. And it's not a want, it's a need. So I just wanted to come in there, talk to you guys, and hopefully we can get something straightened out. I don't know how we can do it. I'm willing to provide, you know, my time and to help if that's what's needed. I was, you know, when the utility guys came out to my residence, I actually, you know, I told them, I said, I will rent a Baco on my own dime and help you dig it up, if that's what it takes. You know, I, that's, I need to do this for my child. You know, my child does not need to drink this type of water, and that's really all I have. Thank you for the time.
Diane Jones from the Ware District. I want to address a few issues. I studied the intersection at Woods Cross Road, and there are curves. When you come south, there's a curve, and there's a curve when you're going north just before that intersection. And my suggestion is that you make that a non, no passing zone for a considerable distance, because if you're passing a semi, you're not going to see people coming out this way, going north. And going south, you're not going to see them coming out from this way. So that's just an idea. I know you've, they've already decided what to do, but it might even help if they also did, made it a no passing zone. My own experience with AI, I was sitting at my computer one night and talking on my phone, not touching the computer. Suddenly, the computer turned, screen turned red and a target appeared on the computer screen. And then everything I was saying on the phone began to be written on the computer screen, until I said, oh, my gosh, the computer is writing down everything I'm saying, and then it went off like that. So I make myself extremely boring online. Do not take surveys, especially on Facebook. Do not take a survey that includes your race, any other demographics about you, especially your income, for heaven's sake. Don't put it on a survey on a computer. If they need to know that, like a bank or something, you know, that's different. But you go to the bank and write it out. I want to talk about transparency in this idea that you have, that you shouldn't read public comment. If you had a nice, big auditorium and lots of parking where people could show up, even people that can drive at night, then it would be okay, because there would be people showing up and commenting. But you don't. And also, we have actually, some of us who have commented have actually looked on your law, on your, whatever your thing is online, and the comments have been deleted. You can't find them. They're gone. So you got to be transparent. You're a public servant, not a public dictator, and you need to start being transparent, because there is an election coming up in November, and we're really trying to find, if you're honest and you want to, willing to serve on this Board of Supervisors, please run for office. Thank you.
Any other? There are others. Ms. Cromer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several comments submitted. First from Alexander Williams on Dogwood Forest Drive. Keep online comments available. Some community members like myself or active-duty military can only participate this way. From Michael Martin, Old Concord Road. Keep online public commenting. Angela Foster, Saris Cove Drive in Hayes. Do not get rid of the right for citizens to submit comments through email. And from Joshua Calhoun, Belroy Road. Please continue the practice of allowing online submission of public comments. Thank you. Those were all the comments for public comment period.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cromer. That ends our public comment period. This time we're going to move on to our public hearing. Ms. Steel?
Okay, tonight I am going to briefly go over the presentation again, because the board has already heard it. Hopefully the public watched last time, but tonight is more about public comment than hearing a repeat of me. But I also know that some people might have missed it, so I'm going to try to do it as quickly as I can. At your place, you were given two slides to replace page 20 and 24 in your hard copies. We learned, and they're corrected on the slides tonight, that the column that had the departments listed, I had just totally blown. I think I copied over last year's and didn't change. So it didn't have the right department, even though it had the right figures and the right years and stuff on those. So those two slides are there for you.
How many pages was the presentation, and you messed up two slides? We're good.
Okay. Very forgiving. Thank you. So the topics of discussion, I'm not going to go through these, but, you know, the public can read these two online if they want to go through anything more. And I'm happy if anybody wants to reach out to us, to talk to us about specific questions that they have. The objectives are the same as we've had in the past, and the process was the same with the only slight modification in how the forms were submitted. We also kept the prioritization rating the same. I'm going too fast. And just a reminder for the public that the planning commission votes on all the different projects and their prioritization. So does the budget team and the department heads, and then all those scores are combined. So the rating that you'll see later is all of them combined. For inflation, for the best crystal ball that we have, we used a 4%, looking for outlying years. And according to Davenport, we kept with the 5% projected interest rate on any borrowing. The funding options are typical ones that, again, are available for creating high-dollar or more expensive items that are half, are part of a capital improvement plan. One thing I want to note here, that this is the slide that Ms. Callaway provided for you on where we ended the year and what our 14% to 16% reserve rate is that's part of your plan. And with using a 16% reserve of our fund balance, that would leave $3.2 million for Pago one-time purchases. I'd like you to notice the remaining available differences, and in particular, looking at the 15.5%, which would offer an additional $707,000 for Pago, and I'll explain that as I get further, along with some updates. And I mentioned last time, and I want to say it again, that other localities are using different systems that we don't have in place. And pretty much what we do is, we see how much money is left over, and then we apply that to the list of needs, instead of putting in a line item the needs we have and finding the funding for that. So if we don't have enough money, we postpone. And that works in some cases, but in others, it's put us into a real bad situation with not having enough funding to meet our capital needs. So other locations are using things like a revenue stabilization fund. So if the economy goes into a downturn or whatever, they've got a little bit of backup. If they don't raise the taxes that they thought they were going to raise, they don't have to go into firing employees or cutting back services. They've got that fund. Other locations have a capital reserve fund, where, again, they are either saving money up for a purchase later on, Pago, so they don't have to borrow, or they have extra money in there if something, you know, comes about that hadn't been planned, or it was more expensive than they thought it was going to be. And then the debt service reserve fund, the same kind of thing of knowing that they're going to have debt and they're putting it aside and saving those funds. With the summary of projects, I had, I did keep the same slides in as last time. So the part to focus in is on the block, and that is that all the total requests with the exclusion of two that I felt were not appropriate for this first five years, a community center and middle school restrooms, that the total needed for debt financing was just over $100 million, and then $31 million with Pago. Here's a list of the new projects that were added this year and the years that they would be applicable. The most notable is the Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue Station 1. Looking at the five-year plan for Pago, I had on the front, 3.2 million, trying to keep it under 3 million of using Pago. You can see that every single year is much higher than what we have this year and also have had in past years. And also, a number of these projects are partially or wholly grant-funded. So if those items have to be moved on before we would get a grant, we, these dollars would actually be understated. This shows both the Pago and the finance projects with what the total would be that we would need for making our debt payment, and that is already accounting for using the available debt retirement that will be coming to us, as well as any of the contributions from outside sources. So when you add Pago and debt, we're looking at 6.79, 12 million, 9 million, 9.6. To understand the Pago deficit, we ran a chart to see how long would it take to pay off just the five years of projects that are listed right now. And it would take, at the rate of $3 million, it would take 11 years. And $3 million is more money than we've put to Pago, and I can't even know if there's a time that we haven't put that much, unless it was a holdover project. The negative impacts, we talked about some specifics of what happens, because we're experiencing that. Beaver Dam Parking Lot was a part of our CI plan for many, many years, and by the time we finally did it last year, it was 10 times one of the previous reports I was able to find, and that may not have been the earliest one. If we delay a project, sometimes it can get more expensive, not just by inflation, but because the need gets worse, like a roof repair that then leads to other kinds of damages and the project becomes bigger. And then sometimes we're just not able to replace things. And we have the playground at Gloucester Point Beach, which was very popular, has been gone, and we have not had the funds to replace it. The playground at Beaver Dam, the main playground, is due to be replaced next year, and we could lose that, as well as upcoming, the one at Ark Park. So we can end up losing services if we delay. On the shortfall solutions, the most, the three that I put into place in the plan is, one, postponing projects, two, using the school sales tax reserve, and three, adding a real estate tax increase. If the board moved forward with the recommendation, or pretty close to it, it would require all three things. This is, for reference, again, our debt retirement, and we did include the funds that we would be getting in that five-year period, and apply them to our anticipated debt, recommended debt, I should say. The green on the slide shows projects that are, have another source of funding. And so all of those, and this is all five years of the projects, I'm going to go further down, but you can see it's, well, I'm sorry, I'm going to show on the next slide. But all of these either are grant-funded, or they have a reserve account. And then the debt financed, I should have had the fire and rescue should have been green too, because they are providing funds to help with that project if it goes forward, and I'll explain that in a minute. So the Pago request just for next year, this is where I was trying to get to that small number, that 2.814750 is outside funding sources. And so that reduces the amount, and that, again, is looking at the ones that we have, like the grant projects. Now, I mentioned the scoring. These are all the scores that were put forward in the numerical order, and the highlighted ones for debt financing. And then here, where the Pago recommended, just looking specifically at the FY26 projects. And the total to do this with that 3.2 fund balance would be about $299, so we're right under that. Again, with the matching grant programs, I know there was some attention that probably somebody's, members of the public might see Gloucester Point Beach, 2.5 million. 2.436750 is grant funding. That is a 95% grant project, and the, it is not a recreational project. It is a shoreline restoration project because of the flooding and the erosion that we have at Gloucester Point Beach. The $250,000 for historic preservation, that comes from our restricted account. And then the generator with the AC for running it, for building one, that's also in green, is only if we get the grant. And then the county paving program is highlighted in yellow, because that is a, to get it down to 2.9, we cut the paving from what the request was. So what got pushed back? You can see the different projects here that are pushed back. What you may not note, though, is the HVAC wasn't included for the schools on the pay, and it's not here. Year one is not on there, and that's because it's going to be talked about under debt financing, pretty much taking it from a Pago and putting them together, five years' worth, and doing financing. Okay, here's the update, and then my challenge of reading my own handwriting. So since the last presentation, the board has asked a number of questions about the software program, and staff has been responding to them. And in that process too, because, you know, things move along, we talked to the vendor that is, I think it's safe to say, a preferred vendor right now. No decision's been made, no funding is available, but the person, the company that Tyler, that we've been talking with, we got a firmer quote on what we needed to do. And so we learned a little bit more about it. And the change that, it's a big change. It's to take it from being a borrowing to a Pago. So there's good news and bad news. It ends up being about the same as far as borrowing, so it's sort of a trade-off. But to give you an idea on where we stand on this, it's a 24- to 48-month process to install all the different components. As you all know, we already have the treasurer's office, we already have the commissioner revenues. We would start with finance, HR, and utilities, and we would hold community development until those- And we would hold community development until those others had been installed. So, and you know, there were two prices we talked about. One was the buy it right now price, and then the other is what you have to pay each year. So looking at the finance program would take two years to install. The first year of the one time is only 558,000 only. But that's not a borrowing type. Doesn't warrant borrowing, paying interest on. The second year is 215 and the third year is only 24,000. So the grand total for, for purchasing the program is only 798,000. So let's just say 800,000, which is a lot different than 2 million. Now, the annual contract, year one would be 499. And then year two, we would be going up as they integrate the second part of the finance and all that. That would be 656. And year three would be 704. Those are all new dollars in addition to what we currently pay, which is about 138,000 a year for the two components that we have. By, in year two, we would be able to subtract about 60,000 of ongoing contracts we have now and 93,000 the next year. That would be getting rid of Central Square. We can't, we have to run two systems at once for just a little while. All of this is hot off the press from a meeting this morning and will be part of, obviously, the, the full report when it's presented again as part of the budget. And I can send this out to the board in an email as well. So we are still looking at the same kind of need for a tax increase because we would not have basically 500,000, 499,000 more dollars for the operating. So borrowing just for the fire department out of this slide and then, at the top of the slide, and then tax increase to cover that, which is about a penny. And then the rest would be, would be Pago. And in order to do more Pago, I'm sorry, not Pago, operational costs, we would need to raise the taxes. We don't have, to be able to raise our taxes, I mean, raise our overall budget, 6, $500,000, we wouldn't be able to accommodate that.
Ms. Steel, just a quick question. Is it true that the fire department has, is declined to contribute to the construction of their fire department?
No, that's not true. Not at all. So good news on that. And then the HVAC replacement has said, looking at the needs that we have there and that the costs are going to keep going up the more that we postpone it. And the fact that there, the, there is about $2 million that is in the, in the reserves right now, that we've collected additional funds from the school sales tax. And then we could go ahead and take care of all of this using a borrowing and paying about 500,000 a year, what we're collecting extra. And should be okay and get all of that done now. So here are the scores that were, the, versus the recommendations. And for some reason, I think the color's not quite showing up on that. But if you start at the top, you can see that, you know, the 10 and going down. The first one that is on my slide that is, it's a ranking of an eight under historic building preservation. There are several eights. And so I've included that because of the fact that we know we are in fragile buildings that are very much need and care. And we just had our conditions report come in and I won't give you a sticker shock on that. But we've got a lot of work for many years to work on preservation and rehab on these buildings.
Yes, sir. Ms. Steel?
Yes.
Can you describe the nature of the grants associated with the Gloucester Point Beach renovations?
So it is a Fight the Flood DCR grant that pays for shoreline, like living shorelines. So our shoreline is not protected. Yorktown is protected, VEMS is protected. Our beach is not. And so it would be to put in the breakwaters and extend our beach and preserve so that we would not continue to have the flooding and, and issues that we have now.
So have we applied or have we received funding?
Yes, we, we applied and we are awaiting.
And it's a slow, slow process.
They, they delayed it even further because of the flooding out west. So they, we would have known in January had they not extended the deadline. So we're, I don't know what date it's going to be, but fingers crossed.
Yeah, just, the problem with the erosion is that because you've got VEMS and other people down doing it, it means that we're losing more sand than anywhere else because they're, they're controlling the sand, but we're losing it off our beach, which ends up, you know, into, into the channel.
But it's also true that VEMS is going to tear down the building in the back. So how is that going to impact? Will that impact any, any construction we might do with the grant fund? Might have to take the berms out or whatever? Is that going to impact?
No, our properties are completely separated there.
Separate. It won't impact collateral, any collateral issues next to the beach?
No. And in fact, when they did do their beach work, they were kind enough to come over a little bit onto our property. And the, and we have built beach up at the end of our beach because of the fact that they put a breakwater in that crossed the sort of boundary line. So it's helped. The next priority that I would say I, my recommendations are going out of order was skipping the sports complex because of the funds needed for that and jumping down to the generator and air conditioning. And I said, that's grant-funded, so it's not going to, you know, do any priority over something else. And then the elevator replacement because of the issues that we've had there, it's a maintenance thing, then I felt that needed to be done. And also, the Beaver Dam dock bulkhead and bridge replacements, that's a sort of a combination of new and old together. And we have compounding erosion and expansion. And then the roof replacement that I also kept into the budget, and these are all explained of why they went out of the numerical order, but almost match exactly what was the average scoring. I'm skipping these two slides because I just explained to you the latest on the software purchase. And again, we'll have a summary of that. So in the recommendation for funding, we've met with Davenport several times. There are a couple of different ways that the borrowing could occur, can occur for the fire department. But the best way is going to cost approximately a penny on the tax rate. We don't have the, the penny cost yet, so that's one of the things we don't know. But we do not have enough money to do the fire department in its current and new proposed way with a, which went up in price because of inflation, et cetera, without borrowing. And the fire department has a commitment of 820,943 dollars as their portion that would allow us to use that as the first payment to delay and help us to sort of back in and save up enough money to make those, those payments. They would also be providing the existing properties that they own later on. Once there would move, they would come to the county and they would obviously be a great asset and could be used in many different ways or sold or however, that would help financially with other future capital needs or operating needs. The only exception to that is Olivia's, which they currently own and I, and are, my understanding is selling that on their own. And so it is less money than was originally proposed with the bond referendum. It would have been 1.425 million contribution and instead it's an 820. And then the price for the increase, that's another reason why the borrowing is different.
So Ms. Steel, during our retreat, we spoke about utility issues. Where are the utilities issues? Capex projects?
The utilities issues, as we explained, we needed to have your input from the retreat. And so I did not want to include a CIP for utilities without the meeting that we held. In addition, there's, so that information's been gathered and more things are coming. So you're going to be getting another presentation from this leg that will be put together with operating later on. But it's, it is, it needed its own attention. And I guarantee you that it's going to include borrowing now to start dealing with these expensive items. There's just no way to do it without borrowing, that I can see, unless she pulls a rabbit out that I haven't seen yet. But she's been working on that. We've had several meetings with Davenport on how that would work, how it fits into fee increases, how it fits into whether you supplement and giving different options.
And so this one and a half cent increase is exclusive? This one and a half cent increase is exclusive of the utility issues?
Yes, it is. I, I mean, I've just, again, I, you know, I lay it on the line, that's the kind of person I am. And what we are facing is a tax increase for these capital items, fee increases for utilities. And I'm not sure how we're going to be able to avoid additional tax increase for our operating budget. Everything has gone up on people's personal accounts. We all know that. It's the same way with the, the county. So even just the operational, we, we're in the process of reviewing all that. But we know that, you heard a position, one position that was already proposed. And I think that the board wants the support. It sounds very good. There, you know, we're at a breakeven budget. There is no growth that we have yet that is going to bring in more taxes than what we're already projecting. We're pretty flat on sales tax and things. So I think the sooner the public sort of absorbs that and wants to come out and, you know, if they want to make other suggestions or whatever. But I think that, again, people need to understand the dire situation that we are in with inflation and no tax increases.
Ms. Steel?
Yes.
I know you said earlier on the other slide that with the funding for debt financing one, it was approximately one cent. Can you give us the updated changes that you weren't able to put in because the meeting was this morning?
Yes, that, what I just read off? Yes. I'm going to send that to you because that obviously was a lot. But, I mean, I was writing fast and furiously today. So that will explain a lot. And it's very detailed and it's based on a quote. They may not end up being the company, but it's at least that, you know, who, we know it's a true figures.
Thank you.
So the, I, I think I've covered, you know, the things here. The, the one part that is missing is looking at the amount of money to buy the software. So we talked about, we might have to increase our tax rate in order to pay the annual fee, but we have not covered the Pago of 558,000 for the first year. The board could look at rearranging the Pago projects that I've put in and knock a whole bunch out to get that half million plus. My suggestion is that you go further into your fund balance. And that's why I said, look at that figure of that 700,000. So if you allow your fund balance to go to 15 and a half percent and you use that difference, that would give you the one-time money to be able to purchase the software. And then you'd only be looking at the tax increase for the operation.
But what happens in five years when they come to us and tell us the software is going to be $5 million? I mean, we just spent $750,000 a few years ago. We had to change state code to get it implemented because they were going to do it illegally. But luckily, we stopped it and fixed it. But now, I mean, this is, to me, I think we need to take a good, long, hard look at what's available because this is not, this is not in the best interest of Gloucester County and it's not in the best interest of Tyler because they are bleeding us dry.
Because you just said in the third year, it's going to be almost a million dollars.
No, I'm, oh, you mean for the operating, not, not for the one-time purchase. Where we went down in the 2 million from what we anticipated to pay upfront is now only the 798. So 800,000 instead of 200, but you're paying it operationally. We do, are, we are going to be talking to other localities, but it's very hard to see what they pay versus what we pay because of they have different systems. So they may use Tyler for this program, but not that. We are, community development is one of them. Anne's been asked to go back and look specifically at that program and whether they might, there might be a better option. And we don't buy that packet from Tyler, which would reduce.
I would like to just say a couple of things about Tyler and, and the applications. My staff has spent the last two years looking at alternatives because we knew Central Square was not going to be able to continue as a company to support us in the way that we, that they should, contractually and just physically. The applications that we're talking about are all in the cloud now. That's how all of these work. Where we used to have all this on-prem, just to give you a little bit of, a picture of what it would be, if we did this on-prem, we would still buy, on premises, sorry. Hot tea talk. We would still buy a package that cost X amount of dollars. To manage this type of application in this size, I would need $300,000 a year worth of employees and then another 150 to 200,000 a year in equipment, if not 300,000 in equipment. Because I would need database managers, I would need people that could be onsite and almost 24/7 to be tech support for all of the staff. I just don't want us to lose sight that we're just transferring the, the money to a different area. We would still need that type of architecture, that type of staff to monitor and maintain an application like this size.
That's, that's a good point. And I think we can try to find out more from other localities too, as to what their staffing ratios are, if they have a different program. Are they making up for it in local staff? Which also staffing 80% of a budget is the most expensive part. All right, these are, that's the, the timeline that we're following. Tonight is our public hearing and, and unless the board has additional questions, I'm ready to turn it over for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Steel.
Thank you.
This time we'll open up the floor for public comment.
He's got his emergency brake on.
Well, some of my comments are probably out of context now with the current presentation, but being I've already put them together, all reading. The annual CI program has become a sham, a vehicle to raise taxes with little being accomplished to modernize our IT systems, buildings, or internal county infrastructure. Pago, school buses, with a yearly declining public population, the number of buses to be replaced could be placed on hold. The question should be, how many buses are utilized daily that are out of timeline longevity? I cannot believe with over 100 buses that all are utilized daily. A real-time review needs to be accomplished to see if a pause can be put in place and redirect those funds to more pressing, real-time capital improvements. Parks, place parks and recreation in a quasi-enterprise fund, thus having fees paid to offset the cost to having fun and joy by only a few. Also have Woodville Park fields leased to the private leagues to enjoy their fun and none at the whole county expense. The LEEDC to be responsible for seating, lighting, and grounds upkeep. This could become a self-sustaining program for the whole park. After spending over three-quarters of a million on software to make all county departments able to communicate and update on a continuing daily basis, we now learn it is a failure and 2 million is needed to update for compatibility. Once completed, the subscription yearly will be a half million. If this be the case, what will be the backup for systems failure and at what cost? If my book major, in my book, major consolidation of departments would be profitable, since most department head's salaries exceed 100,000 annually, not counting benefits, this process alone would pay for the subscription cost. The constant terminology of fund balances is really a sum of funds for one 24-hour period only. The fiscal balance sheet on 30 June of each given fiscal year. The next day, the new fiscal year, real money is being spent. A further understanding of this process will be later. The CI program should be reduced to a year, two-year program that is, that is than five, since the board of supervisors historically have played a game of kick the ball down the road, only results in nothing being done. History proves that. A two-year run is more realistic to actual revenue collected to accomplish these tasks without long-term debt programs. The The final question tonight will be, what is your outlook on borrowing large sums of funds for the next 20 years or beyond to accomplish tasks on the present documentation? Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone else?
So again, I, I'd like to ask about the generator and the, uh...
What was your name again, sir? I'm sorry.
Patrick Walsh. I'd like to ask about the generator and the 911 system, I believe it's the, um, battery backup, I believe that's what you were referring to. Have we, have anybody asked any local contractors whether they would be willing to help out with any of these projects and/or have, have, how many, how many quotes have we gotten? Have you guys gotten? I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm asking because I have no clue. I'm just saying that maybe we could possibly get the community involved as far as having, you know, Haywood Flooring do the, the high school and the, and the elementary school that need new flooring and possibly get HVAC system worked on by a contract, local contractor like, like us, for example, Walsh Electric. We, we do, we do business for everybody. We do, we've done the courthouse over there in Matthews. So I just, I think that there we could, you know, get in, you know, we could get creative and try to figure out how, how we could do some things a little differently. Maybe we can squeeze the money somewhere. I don't know. But I just, I think we could do something about that. We could reach out to other people and, and see if we, see what we could come up with. I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm new to this, first time I've ever been here, so I'm just, I'm just throwing out some suggestions, that's all. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Nathan Brown from the Wayard District. This is a really, they make it sound really complicated, but the, the problem here is we don't anticipate the cost. We really need to come up with some idea, like here says, the annual Pago should be $5 to $6 million. We don't have, we don't get put in a way, we're not generating $5 to $6 million to do that. So either we got to cut some services and not pay for them and have capital improvements, or we're just going to have to build them. We need to build a budget that has money every year to pay for capital improvements. Obviously, sometimes you have to borrow money, but a lot of these things, you know, like replacing windows, roofs, fixing the elevator, they're going to just keep coming back. So we have to put money aside to do them, just like the firehouse. They've been signing up there for the firehouse, probably been there four, five years. We haven't set a dollar aside for the firehouse. We knew that was coming, but we didn't start, we didn't put any money to it. Now we're faced with having to borrow every dollar to build a firehouse, whatever money we can't get from the fire department. You know, they, they contribute a lot, and, but we don't have, we never set money aside for these projects. So things don't get done because we're not going to finance them. So either we got to cut things out permanently, or we need to actually have a budget that's a reasonable budget to pay for these things. And as you look back, as you look ahead, as things roll off, roll off in 2028 and beyond, then we can actually save money because we won't be going in there going, oh, we'll have money, we're not paying out in debt service. So, I mean, nobody wants to raise taxes, but if we, if you're going to decide these are the things we have to have, we have to pay for them. You know, I'm a businessman, I know exactly, you got to pay to operate your business, you have to pay for replacement costs. And I have a big replacement cost to bill every year. That's part of my budget, and we're not doing that. We're just saying, okay, we got a couple million dollars or $3 million or whatever left over at the end of the year, that's our budget. That's not a way to run a business or run a government. We should have a, a dedicated number we're shooting for, and if we run over, we can either have put money in a reserve fund, or you can send money back to, to taxpayers, but it just doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Ms. Cronin? Uh, oh, Ms. Cronin, hold tight.
Diane Jones from the Wayard District. I might want a lot of stuff, but if I don't have the money in my bank account, I don't purchase it. If I know I'm going to need something, then I put that in the, just not in literal envelope, but in envelope, how much I need to save up to obtain what I, what I need or what I Again, I think we need to complete transparency fiscal audit of every single board member, where they get their money, when something goes on in a project, how much goes back to that board member to get that project by that contractor or businessperson that does it. We have a lot of local talent in this county, but you can't keep taxing us just because you want something or need something because you haven't planned for it fiscally. And we don't seem to have a big illegal alien problem in this county, but I will tell you that I know Tom Homan, and he knows every single one of those 20,000 Chinese. As, as you can see by the news, there's serious negotiation because of their refusal to accept their people back. But then El Salvador will take them and put them in their hotel prison, if you know what that's like. Anyway, just, just don't, don't all, don't, everything you said, well, we're going to do, we're going to do this, and we're going to, we're going to need to tax, we're going to need to tax, we're going to need to tax. No, you need to budget. You need to get a balanced budget in the county. We don't need to be in debt. The county does not need to be in debt. Debt is, is slavery. Figure it out. There are plenty of, of, there are states that have balanced budgets. Even Bill Clinton balanced the budget. Of course, it was the Speaker of the House who did it, but nonetheless, you've got to understand that, you know, it's our money. It's not your money, it's our money. We live here, you own my house because I have to pay taxes twice a year. That shouldn't be. I, I should buy the house and, and that's it. Don't keep raising my taxes, and don't keep raising, if, if you want to put a, a sales tax or something on something, use local people to do your work, and I'm sure, you know, you should have used local people to get that, whatever, you want to change the emblem of Gloucester County, you should have had a local artist instead of, I don't know where you got that crazy G with the wave through it from, but it wasn't from Gloucester County artists.
Yes, it was. Okay, is there any other? No other? Ms. Cronin?
The wrong ones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's one comment submitted for the public hearing from Kenny Hogg Senior. We need a new fire station located in an operationally practical, not an aesthetically or socially preferable location. This should be a best practices business decision, should not be taken lightly. At some point, the new station will likely become property of the county when the population outgrows the volunteer fire and EMS systems. Before the station is built, the planning department should determine the best location based on projected growth of the county. They will likely find that Main Street is not an operationally practical location, and the old Page School property or county-owned land near Home Depot probably are, with the Page property being the least expensive option because of ingress and egress, utility extensions, land clearing, et cetera, adding to the cost at the Home Depot property. A smaller station that is firelight and EMS-heavy would be more suitable for Main Street. The ladder truck and the consolidation of other such heavy assets should not be located on Main Street. Before approving the proposed CIP, I encourage you to remember you are making business decisions involving millions of dollars, and that in order to make sound business decisions, you must have all pertinent information. The Utilities Director has given you a snapshot of the condition of the water and sewer systems, but it is by no means the entire big picture. I and others have told you there are serious and costly issues within the department. You had better think long and hard before handing out money for this CIP or anything else other than essential government functions that do not include parks, recreation, tourism, community engagement, and non-governmental organizations. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that was all.
Okay, now, now that that closes our public hearing, and we'll move on to our regular agenda, board appointments. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Cronin, can we, or Ms. Steel, can we get a copy of what you presented tonight? Is it slightly different than what appears in the...
Okay. Just the two slides I hope.
Well, I'd like to have what was on our screen because it's different than what was in my, slightly different.
Okay, that's good. Okay, board appointments. Yes, we have none?
I have none, but I'm working on the Planning District Commission appointment. I'm trying to get someone to get signed up, if he feels comfortable doing this.
So we have none for the Board of Equalization nor the Medical and Strategic Planning District? Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilmot, can we change, um, um, board members to committees before their term expires?
Mr. Bizani, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
It depends upon the particular board committee. So if you're talking about the Planning Commission, it may be one answer. If you're talking about the Historical Committee, it may be a totally different answer.
Talk offline on that.
So, yeah, it would depend. Generally speaking, yes, but some you may only remove membership for malfeasance or something akin to that, so it depends. So just touch base with me and tell me which committee or board you're talking about, and we'll go from there.
All right. County attorney items. Any sir?
Just happy to be here.
I'm sorry, on the board appointments, there was the Colonial Juvenile Services Commission. We do have the Gloucester Representative that's eligible for reappointment.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Lisa Cursing.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm still happy to be here.
You're still happy to be here? Okay. Board Commission reports? No Board Commission reports. Supervisor discussion?
I'd like to second Mr. Bizani's comments regarding public comments by email. We heard them tonight from several citizens that thought this was a mechanism for citizens to provide a comment they can't make here. So I know we talked about it before, but I also spoke in favor of continuing that, that effort. So that's my one comment. The second is, I know this is a busy season ahead of us, but I know I enjoyed looking at the progress that was being made at the high school, and I know we had two-on-one. I know the schools are going through their process of, you know, budgets, but I would like another opportunity to see where they are in their construction process and, you know, at, at their convenience. I think it worked well due to the two-on-one, so we wouldn't have to worry about a public meeting, but I don't know if other board members would like that, but I think it was very helpful for me to see the progress being made at the high school, because I know they're moving pretty quickly, and there's some big changes that occurred pretty rapidly there.
Who's supposed to complete? September 25th, this year, September.
So it'd be good to, I mean, again, I know this is like a busy time, and I don't want to, you know, put, put these people out, but it only took about an hour for some of these meetings.
We'll be glad to make those arrangements.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anymore? Yes, sir.
Um, just a comment from what Ms. Steel made earlier. I think as a board, we need to think about how we want to view the operations, the way the county's run. Do we want to do it more micromanaged or more macro from the 500-foot level or the 50,000-foot level? And I think it's something that we need to think about and come up to give staff some guidance on what level we want to view it, and what involvement we want to have, because I think it's difficult when you have staff that is versed in their particular areas and sitting on the board. We don't have the opportunity to be as in-depth as they are in making decisions, and I think sometimes that decisions are held up result, waiting for board decisions. And I think there's, since three of us have been on the board, I think some things should have been done a whole lot quicker, that, um, waiting for results. And I know that, I see it quite a bit on Planning Commission, nothing about that, but you've got to, I mean, for their election of officers, it takes almost three months because you've got to nominate, just the way it's written. So some things need to be streamlined, and other things, I think that staff, administration needs to just make the decision and notify us, unless it's major items, but if it's just normal operations or that type of thing, I think we need to figure out where we want to be involved, and we need to think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Okay, anyone else? Next, we just have closed meeting. So who wants to read us into a closed meeting?
Nothing would give me greater pleasure.
Nothing would give you greater pleasure, Mr. Wilmot.
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting of February 4, 2025, and whereas the nature of the subject is discussion of reports or plans related to the security of a governmental facility and the safety of persons using such facility pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purpose herein expressed pursuant to the legal authority herein reciting.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call. Roll call.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
...hereby reconvene an open meeting at its meeting of February 4, 2025, and certifies the matter set forth in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711.
Seven.
Thirty-seven. Twelve.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Steel? Ms. Steel?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
So moved.
Not yet.